Alderman Gultra and Alderman Moore are absent. Alderman Hanrahan?
Here.
Alderman Looby?
Here.
Alderman Palmer?
Here.
We have six present, three absent. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the April 7, 2010 committee meeting. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to the minutes that are submitted?
Motion to approve.
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. Third item on the agenda will be a report on changes in the billing for North Shore Gas. And, uh, Ramesh?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, in your packet on page eight is a letter from North Shore Gas. We brought it before you this evening really for two reasons. Number one, to congratulate you on being so clairvoyant. About two and a half years ago, we did the municipal services building and we had the conversation, you might recall, about whether we were going to go green and try and be more energy efficient. And at the time, we said, "Well, do we really need to because we're getting free service?" Well, guess what? We're not getting free service anymore and directly in that this is obviously getting charged back now through a recent rider onto resident bills. But I think we want to walk through it briefly, sort of brief you as to where we are in our discussions with North Shore Gas and the franchise agreement. But then also, I think, taking a look as we go forward about how the city of Lake Forest can become more energy efficient in all of its facilities because this is directly now coming back to the residents of Lake Forest one way or another. So, Ramesh, I'll let you turn it over to you.
Thank you, Bob. Chairman, members of the council. Just to give a brief history, I know the writing here says that we received notification that previously they used to provide free gas. Prior to May 1, the way North Shore Gas used to bill was all the franchise facilities in its, uh, all the community of North Shore, they used to get that franchise bill and they used to equally divide that bill among all its residents before. But it used to never separately list in our bill. It used to be somewhere, part of their bill, somewhere within the, in each customers, but they should never spell it out. So, they went to ICC and they tried to make it more equitable for all the municipalities. They went to ICC and they got approved where all the municipalities who get the free franchise gas gonna be billed to their residents only. So, and then you're gonna see a line item in your bill which says franchise cost adjustments. So, that's the difference right now compared to what it was before. Before, we should not see that line item and they used to bill it among, equally among all the members, all the customers within the North Shore. Right now, you'll see this differentiation in your bill which will say franchise cost adjustments. I talked to Andrea Dank, she's our representative. The bill you're gonna see is around $1.68 per month is what, what they're estimating for this franchise cost fee for each resident. That's again based on the facilities which they give us free franchise gas. Right now, it's around eight facilities which we are. Again, going back to Bob's point in terms of, we are looking at all the facilities when we try to get them onboard on this free franchise and seeing where they fall in terms of how much gas we are using. And again, you know, we try to be as much as, as much efficient as possible when we move forward. Also, the other facilities which the North Shore Gas has in our right-of-way, like they have all their pipelines and all, that's all covered under our right-of-way ordinance where we still inspect all their permits, we still do all the inspections, and then any utility they have to move as part of our right-of-way construction is still taken care by them. So, again, this is just to notify that you will see this line item in your bill saying that it's gonna say franchise cost adjustment. It's not a new, it's not addition to the existing bill, it's just that it's, they reworded it so that it's more clear now, and that's how they got it blessed.
But, so previously, they pulled everything together and they just buried it in the rate base in charges. Do we know what we were getting charged previously? I mean, is Lake Forest getting hit on this or are we doing better on this?
I, I think we were doing better because I'm guessing, let's just say Park City or some of the smaller, smaller communities who didn't have many facilities, they used to get equal amount as Lake Forest. Lake Forest has like eight facilities. Highland Park has like, you know, maybe 12 or 15.
But, but it's based on facilities, it's based on usage per?
Per, per community.
Per person in the community, right?
That's correct.
Per gas usage. We obviously use, our residents probably use a lot of gas.
But, but this one, we're just talking franchise.
Yeah, this doesn't have anything new with the residents. No, but, but what they're doing is they're, they're figuring out what our franchise gas is, and then they're splitting it up amongst all our residents based on their usage. Yes. Okay. So, if we look how it was done historically, all right, my guess is Lake Forest residents have a lot of usage of gas, personal usage of gas, because the houses are much bigger.
Right.
Right.
Okay? So, the question is, you know, as we, we should be able to get the number from them. They should be able to tell us what it was before this.
Sure, yeah.
And, and I'd like to see, see what that number is.
And, Ramesh, it's only residents, it's not businesses?
No, businesses will pay.
Customers.
All customers.
All customers of Lake Forest, city of Lake Forest is equally divided, right, for the franchise.
Okay, and the eight facilities, are those just city facilities? Do they include schools?
No, all, all city facilities.
What are they doing with 115 and 67?
They pay their own gas.
They pay their own gas.
They have their own, right, they have their own, yeah. It's only city facilities.
This line gonna be below the state taxes and everything or we're gonna pay our own, pay our own city tax on our gas for the buildings?
It's gonna be after the taxes, this line?
No.
I mean, do we have any idea this was coming?
Yeah, yeah, they, they sent it like in February, that's where they were trying to...
Well, but the case got approved in January, right? Their, their, their case got approved in January.
From ICC.
So, for the 11th month period that they were in getting this case, did we get any warning that this was going on? Or any forewarning from the state that maybe you want to try and cut your gas costs? One thing to note is that this has been the way Commonwealth Edison has done it for about the last 12 years, and it's just a matter of the gas companies catching up. The, you know, again, it used to be a matter of taking a larger region of customers and then just dividing the costs of those customers among all of the, the users. Now, it's a more discreet look so that the, the costs are focused on just those that are being incurred within the city of Lake Forest. And when we talk about those costs, it's not only facilities, I assume it's our lights too?
No, no, gas lights we pay.
We already pay the gas lights?
Yep.
Yeah.
Gas lights are, are billed on monthly basis. It's around 50 grand for the year, I would say.
So, it's just the gas for the eight facilities?
Yes.
What about for customers that don't use North Shore Gas, which I think is, is possible now, right?
Uh, they have to use it for distribution, I believe.
Right, they can buy the gas.
And it's just a distribution charge.
So, they're gonna pay the charges regardless?
Right, right, yeah.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I had one question. Was there anything that we had done, been doing to give North Shore Gas any kind of a break? When, anything that we've been considering because we thought they were being kind to us and maybe we should take a fresh look at that kindness? I don't know if there is anything, it's just something.
We'll, we'll evaluate, but I can't think of anything.
Okay.
I think I... We have been operating under the same franchise for a while. The franchise is technically expired, but both the, the gas company and the city have been honoring the terms since its expiration.
Yeah. Any more comments or questions?
If you can just get back to me and see if they can give us a number of what we're, 'cause I'd be interested to know whether we're getting a benefit from this or getting socked on this.
Yeah, just to add to that, the delivery charges, you'll see some reduction in the, since they're putting this franchise gas, there'll be reduction in the delivery charges. So, she said it's not a major...
Supposedly, although the delivery charges went up a lot.
Right, but we'll, we'll see, right, we'll see reduction in those charges.
They wouldn't do it if they weren't making more.
Yeah, if they're not making more, they keep it the way it is.
Yeah.
So, there'll be a, a part of our normal bill that would have been undisclosed.
Right.
That will now be disclosed.
That's correct.
So, the disclosed part will be something we'll notice and that will be a designated increase, but the corollary is that part of our undisclosed bill should go down.
Should go down, that is correct.
But it won't go down because they also approved a big rate hike in front of us.
That'd be just for, just for this.
It would've gone up, went up less than supposedly it would have.
Yeah, per term, yeah, they did go up.
Stu, it's going up.
It's going up.
If you don't like it, get an overcoat for the winter.
Go electric.
Go electric. Any more questions or comments on this topic? And, thanks, Ramesh. Item four on the agenda is a report on enhancing pedestrian safety, and, uh, welcome back.
Let me just make a couple of quick comments. This is something I know we've talked about for past few months with the council about number of locations in town, but more specifically, the staff was looking generally within town, are there ways that we can become much more pedestrian friendly, if you will? And we've had a couple of articles in the dialogue, but one of the technologies that's out there that we, we've been talking about and we want to brief the council before they show up on the streets is included in your packet, which are these yield to pedestrian within crosswalk sign, because clearly, there's a lot of people that don't understand what the rules are about pedestrian vehicular, who's got the right-of-way. And while I was taking my daughter around to see college campuses this year, this is very prevalent around college campuses, and thought that it would be a nice tool for us to use, particularly in some high-traffic areas, and Lake Forest College was one, because we've always had problems down there at that crossing at Sheridan Road. But as the transport, or the Traffic Safety Coordinating Committee looked at, there were a number of other locations that came up Everett Road because that was also under recent discussions by the Public Works Committee and others. And so, I've asked Ramesh to highlight those that the staff is proposing to put in place. I know I've received a couple of phone calls from some of you about, well, what about this intersection or that intersection? Clearly, we can do any intersection the city council feels is justified. We just didn't want to put too many up right from the start. We can always add them going forward because I think we believe that once you put them up, they'll never come down, and so we wanted to just make sure that we're all consistent in how we identify these locations and agree to put them up in these locations. Now, these are only going to be up seasonally, so they won't affect snow plowing, and, Ramesh, why don't you pick it up from there and explain what we're looking at?
Again, just to give a brief background, you know, pedestrian crosswalks, obviously the ones which are, we call the stop control, where your signal lights, stop signs, those, they have pedestrian, you know, pedestrians have the right-of-way when a vehicle is stopped. Most of the, I mean, not in Lake Forest, but mostly in general, it's what we call the unmarked crosswalk, those mid-block crosswalks where there is no stop control. Those are the ones where the Illinois law clearly states that the pedestrians and the vehicles have the right-of-way. What they're saying is pedestrians, be cautious while you're crossing, and vehicles are supposed to yield to the pedestrians when a pedestrian is in that, that crosswalk, whether it's, now, now, there's again still a debate whether it's marked or unmarked. The law still says that pedestrians have to be cautious when approaching, if there's no crosswalk and you're crossing mid-block, be cautious, they're saying, but the drivers are supposed to yield to the, to the pedestrians. So, with, with that background, we looked at what all Lake Forest does. So, in the top, last 10 years, we looked at the data we have, I mean, less than .5% of, of all the units involved, we call the accidents, there were like close to 10,000 vehicles in accidents, pedestrian percentage was less than .5%, where the pedestrians got hurt or injured, and the bikers was less than .2%. This is in the last 10 years, you know, we looked at the accident history. So, overall, the Lake Forest is a pedestrian-friendly community. We do care about our pedestrians and we have certain, I would say, ordinances and, and rules in place which help. That was also echoed by the Lake Forest College students, you know, which we did a survey on them. The, the prevalent issue from them was the, what is the law? We don't know what is the law. And I think that's where this, we call the inlay pedestrian crosswalk will, will, will help us, which, which, which will clearly dictate. I got a, uh...
They have a problem.
High-tech, I guess.
Just bring that with you?
No. All right. So, that's, those are the, what we call is a, the manually, uniform control device as standard, like, that's just like the standard sign, it's a fluorescent green and it says yield to pedestrian within crosswalk. Right now, as Bob identified, we identified three, three areas which we call the high-foot traffic. One is obviously the CBD, one by Sheridan School and the other one by Everett and Telegraph. So, these are, these are gonna go right in the double yellow lines, they're gonna go in there, April 1st to November 1st is what the, you know, timeline we are looking into. And along with that, we also want to do the striping, you know. Right now, if you look at throughout the town, we got various designs of the striping. We want to keep it all uniform, it's gonna be like an angle within two solid lines. So, that's the other thing we're gonna implement in the next five years as, as, each year, we stripe certain areas. When we stripe, we're gonna try to keep it uniform so that at least in Lake Forest, all the crosswalks are a uniform striping. Police, Lake Forest Police conducts this Safe, uh, Safe Walk program to the schools and all. That's the other element, we're gonna continue to do that so that again, to remind the, the residents about the pedestrian safety. And of, of course, a council meeting like this and then in the TV ad, we want to promote about the pedestrians and, and the safety to walk within the crosswalk areas. The areas to, the areas we're looking at again are CBD, we're gonna put one on Western by Jewel Asco, one by Fresh Farms, Fresh Farms, which is gonna, Fresh Market is gonna open up in August. One on Westminster, right by Forest Avenue. That's again, another mid-block where there's no stop sign, there's no stop control. It's a mid-block crosswalk with no stop control.
Which side is the crosswalk on there or is it on both?
This, this is, this one?
On the, on Westminster?
It, it, it runs, it's on Westminster, it runs, uh...
But you're, you're saying one that goes across Westminster, right?
Right.
It's forest.
But isn't it, isn't there a crosswalk on both sides of the block?
Right.
Both sides?
Yeah.
I know it's on the east.
On the east side, right, it's on the east side.
So, there's not a crosswalk on the west side?
But, but this sign will go, you know, this sign will go right in the middle of the pavement, and it's, you know, across middle, I would say four, four and a half.
I know, but I'm just saying, if you have two crosswalks, then you're gonna have two of these things.
I think there's only one on the east side.
I think there's only one on the east side.
Okay.
Right.
Well, they cross a lot on the west side because that's the Starbucks sign.
Right.
No, no, you're at the wrong intersection.
Forest.
Oh, I'm at the wrong intersection, I'm at Oakwood, okay.
Oakwood, Oakwood has a stop control. Oakwood has a stop control, so we don't need, we don't need a pedestrian crosswalk.
But you need it right on here.
Yeah, this is...
At Bank.
At Deer Path.
At Bank Lane and Deer Path and Western, even Western and Deer Path, because those cars come over those railroad tracks for people trying to cross there, and since they don't have to stop.
Right.
You run for your life. This, that picture there looks like a guy running for his life across the intersection.
Kinda looks like Ren.
Looks like Ren. But, you know, that's probably one of the worst. I don't know if you could do it where they would be coming up Deer Path and be able to see that and know that downtown that, you know...
I, I would just put it on the, the bank.
Right, the bank.
Bank Lane and Deer Path.
That's going in.
By the ice cream store.
Right.
And hopefully, if they see it there, they'll know.
Well, hopefully, yeah.
Right.
The, the problem with that intersection though is, and I'm wondering about this, when you get these 18-wheel trucks going down to the grocery stores, they may just take them out every time.
Right, that's the one we are, right.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna have to assess.
That's right, when they're flattened in pieces.
Yeah, you don't want to put these signs in it, right, turning gradient, that's, that's true. So, that's why we're putting on Bank Lane, Westminster, two on Western Avenue, one by Sheridan and one by Telegraph.
And I would leave the Fresh Market, I would not put that out.
No, no, not right now.
Yeah. Until the...
That's why I was thinking though, that if you had more of a posted sign, that sort of thing coming into town near the stoplight at Deer Path where they'd see it coming through that they have to stop at crosswalks.
Right.
They might, you know, better than, because that corner, David's right, if making that corner out here at Bank Lane, they're gonna be driving over that little sign sitting out there, it'll be smashed all the time.
On, on Bank Lane, or maybe at Deer Path, definitely.
Bank Lane and Deer Path, I'm saying if it's on Deer Path Road at that intersection.
They'll be all right there, it's when they have to turn on Western and Deer Path that if there's one there, they'll...
They'll get that too, yeah.
Right, I mean, we'll try to keep it a little bit west of the intersection so that as they're coming in, they can see it rather than right at the, right at that intersection during the turning gradient.
Right.
Can I ask a question? Just, has there ever been a thought of putting a stop sign in on Deer Path and Bank Lane? Because that's one of the more frustrating intersections.
And we have it every little short block.
Yeah, packed up.
You just stop at Oakwood, you'd stop at Bank, you'd stop at Deer Path, plausibly, but...
And, and people should know, you should never try and make the left turn there, you just gotta go left or direct. That's why you have all the stop signs on Illinois, you can go around and cut around.
Exactly.
Well, as I mentioned though, we're, this is something we're trying. If there are other intersections or other locations you think work better, if you're hearing feedback from people, please let us know. It's just interesting because even internally, as we've been talking about this, our own staff has said, "Oh, I didn't realize that that was the rule in the law," and most people don't understand pedestrians do have certain rights. I think most people don't understand the law. My recommendation would be we do this at no more than three locations to start, because I think once people see it, they'll figure out the law and maybe they'll act better. And we will, this will clog up traffic and people will hate this, even though it's absolutely the right thing to do, and it's an accident waiting to happen, people will complain about it. So, you know, I don't think we want to get too bogged down. I don't think we want to get too bogged down in the CBD with having these all over the place.
I, I agree with that.
So, it would be my recommendation to start in two or three locations and... Well, we have Everett Telegraph, we have Lake Forest College there at Sheridan. Do we need one there? I mean, that, that one's got a light and everything.
Yeah, but the summertime and the camps and stuff, I think that's a good time.
I can't tell you the, and the other night when I was driving by there, there was a near miss. And it's for northbound people that for some reason are not paying attention or whatever the case might be, because we even got the lights in the pavement. I mean, if you don't see the blinking lights, are you really gonna see the sign? That's my only...
There's a fluorescent green, so you have to see, you know.
And, but then, and we can just do one or two in the CBD and leave it at that and see if... I do one at Deer Path and Bank Lane, and I do one down by the Jewel.
Jewel, yeah.
And I leave Westminster for now.
I agree.
We can add that later, but... Okay, we'll start with those four and then we'll see what kind of reaction we get.
And then a notice in our, in the mayor's newsletter.
Right, there will be in our article in the dialogue again.
Big one, yeah.
And hopefully, Linda Blazer will pick up on it and do an article as well. I would also add too, that if you see anything in your travels, if you come across anything that you think, again, add some, uh, safety aspects to pedestrians, bicyclists, whatever, please let us know, because, you know, we're looking, as, as Ramesh said, knock on wood, we haven't had many problems up to this point in time, but our population is aging and there are more cars on the streets. So, I think we need to try and do whatever we can to, to make sure we avoid those conflicts.
And one thought might be, and, you know, just throwing this out there, for the bike path on Ryan, it crosses over Ryan by the railroad tracks, and that's a, a constant near-miss area where maybe some of these signs would be appreciated, because I've seen the bikes shoot out, especially on weekends, not stop, go over Ryan, and I, I can't tell you how many times it's been closed.
Yeah, and, yeah, we looked at that too, there's a stop sign, again, that the bikers are supposed, yeah, they're supposed to stop, I, I know, that, that, we did get that, one of the traffic safety items was, and then that's where we put, we put some speed bumps, but that was, you know, bikers were going around it, so...
Another bad corner is right there crossing West, Western at the railroad tracks, because... But I mean, I think what we've done on Western Avenue also where we've shortened the crosswalk because we've taken the curbs and it helps a lot, I mean, I think one of the reasons Deer Path is so bad, it's a long way across. But, you know, you go sit out there on a Saturday afternoon and watch little kids try and cross from the ice cream store and it's scary, because it's a game of chicken, you know, people don't stop. No, that's right.
There was another recommendation, I, I don't want to say it, but I'll still say it, that was to enforce the existing, uh, police enforcement, you know, they can give a ticket for jaywalking at these high-traffic areas, it ranges from 75 to 750, but, you know, if, if you feel like pedestrian crossing is an issue...
I mean, I think one of the things we have to do once we put these sign up is try and enforce this, if it's not getting enforced. I mean, I think right now, a lot of people don't understand the law. Once it's up, you know, we may need to put someone, a policeman out on Deer Path and, you know, issue some warnings and try and get, because...
That's what Chicago did last year. You cut around that corner in front of those people downtown or went to cut through when they're crossing and they had somebody tag those cars right away and they gave them, they actually gave them tickets, I think, your warning tickets would be one.
And I think you did it for the cell phones.
Right, yeah, at, at the school.
You pulled people over.
Right, so that's the new law too, during school hours, you cannot use your cellphone or text. I mean, you cannot text no matter what, but you cannot use cellphone in the school zone. That's a new law, not many people know, but that's...
I don't think anyone knows about that.
Yeah, oh, no, our cops are pulling over, so...
Well, we should put that in the dialogue.
They're on the phones coming out of the station.
Yes. I didn't say that, but... Thank you, Ramesh.
Now, we have to get someone else up. Item five on the agenda is an award of a bid for the replacement of the street section skid steer and attachment, and this will be presented by Michael Thomas to give Ramesh a break.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. This evening, staff is requesting city council approval for the award of purchase for a skid steer. A skid steer is a unit that we use primarily on our streets asphalt program, and we also use it throughout the year on our parks forestry sections to load material, sod, dirt, et cetera. We use it in our snow program when we do CBD cleanup, intersection cleanup as well. The existing skid steer is 15 years old, we bought it back in June of 95. The report that I presented to you gives a quick summary of our expenses that we've expended on this, over $40,000. We went ahead and put specifications together and placed the unit out to bid. This, by the way, is our last unit, a piece of equipment for the FY 10 fiscal year. With the fleet committee, the internal fleet committee, Bob had asked us to hold on ordering any equipment until that review had completed and standards were created, so that did occur in February, we placed the, the unit out to bid this past month. The bid tabulation is presented not only in the committee, the whole packet, but the city council write-up as well. We had the bid opening one, excuse me, Thursday afternoon, so as a result, we spent the remaining part of Thursday and all day Friday reviewing the units, their specifications, checking out references, doing all sorts of things, trying to come down to what we believe would be the, the best purchase for the city. In this case, we typically go with low bid, whether it's pickup trucks, squad cars, state bid, we usually purchase the, the larger plow vehicles off of. This time, we're asking for something unique and different. We're asking to go with a, the, the bid that actually is the highest, the Caterpillar unit. In the memorandum that I provided to you, we review a handful of different, different items, not only the history of the existing unit, but we did a parts breakdown to show a comparison of what the parts will cost us from machine to machine. We looked at resale values, we did our best to compare machines from 2005, approximately 5,000 hours, and look at what the resale values are with similar equipment. Caterpillar typically has a 15% higher resale value. So, in our conclusion, when we looked at what this machine will actually be doing, holding a, operating a 500-pound jackhammer, and what we refer to as a cold planer basically grinds the asphalt so you don't have to do a, a deep base removal and repair, cold planer will grind the first two or three inches and we simply replace the surface coat. Those two apparatuses cause a significant amount of vibration on the machine, and we plan to keep this for 15 years. plan to keep this for fifteen years. So, when we looked at the specifications of all the machines, it was our opinion that the Caterpillar offered the best, the highest quality machine. Again, looking at the payback, looking at the parts, et cetera, et cetera, that is how we based our recommendation. So, I will stop talking and if you have questions...
Yeah, first question is with Patton, there were four different cats that were out, and I think three of them were used and the other was a two thousand and ten. Which one is being...
The two, the newer model, the two thousand and ten. In putting together this memorandum that we provided with you today, to award this purchase, city council would need to waive the bidding process and award the purchase of the unit to Patton Industries. In doing that, for the direction of our city attorney, we need to confirm that Patton will honor their bid, honor their quote. I called Patton late Friday, this morning, they came back and lo and behold, their number was two thousand dollars less than their bid. So, what is in the memorandum is two thousand dollars cheaper than the bid tabulation, so the unit price, I believe, is fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixteen. It makes the difference between that and the low bid, the new machine, ninety-eight hundred dollars. And over a fifteen-year period, it was our opinion that the overall quality of the machine, the buyback, et cetera, that it was worth...
And what's our intention with the other, the old unit?
We will trade it in. We actually solicited bids for people to buy it outright as well. Patton Industries offered the highest trade-in value at ninety-one hundred, so we traded to them.
Mike, you also mentioned, I think, that there was some benefit to using the cat from Patton because of their, I guess, readiness to help out on repairs and parts and so on.
Their service, Patton Industries is very large, Caterpillar, their main headquarters are down in Elmhurst, but they also have a shop in Greyslake. They have what they refer to as mobile repair trucks, so they have multiple units, and whether we have warranty work or ongoing repairs at some point, they can come to our shop, they can actually come on site and make the repair if needed. So, that is one benefit of going with the Caterpillar.
Have we had other units from Caterpillar where we have experience and they are responsive?
We have not. Caterpillar is typically the most expensive unit, and in the past, when we've looked at our other machines, for example, our end loader, when we're loading salt or loading snow, we couldn't put the justification together to say we'd like to go for it. The fact that we're really going to be working this machine hard has pushed us to say we really would like to purchase a quality machine that will last us. So, although we have in some of our trucks Caterpillar engines, as far as Caterpillar heavy equipment, no, we do not.
Have we verified with other users of Caterpillar that, in fact, they do come out and respond to calls?
Yes, yes, we have, we have. And the Campanella, Land and Lakes, there's many private, large construction firms that do use Caterpillar. Yes, absolutely.
I'm just curious, Burris Equipment also put in a bid for a case unit, two thousand and ten. It's a different series, but are they also a regular distributor for Caterpillar?
No, they are not. Burris Equipment distributes or handles the case line and only the...
Oh, that's a case, not a Caterpillar, okay. Yeah, I got it.
Did you ask the mayor at all about this? I know he's not here, but he obviously has from his professional experience, did he have...
I did, I did, and I can read his response if he would...
You can read it for the record.
For the record. He read the memorandum that I had emailed to yourselves this morning. Mike, nice job on outlining your request, the city council should understand your needs and be receptive to requests. Jim, so that was his thoughts on the memorandum that was submitted this morning.
I mean, obviously, you know, Mike, you and I talked earlier about this, ideally we would have bid this from the beginning as a cat bid or as a cat case, you know, what we found to be acceptable brands and specified that somehow in the bid or just agreed that we were not going to do a, you know, get approval to do not a low bid contract. Because it puts us in a little bit of a, an awkward spot.
You are, you're absolutely right.
You know, having said that, the rationale seems pretty thorough here. You know, so from that perspective, it probably makes sense to move ahead with, you know, your request, but we should obviously try and tidy it up in the future if we think there are specific, you know, more stringent specifications than what we're putting out there.
I think, Alderman, Graff House, those are valid points, and one of the things, you know, Michael and I chatted about is, as we look going forward, now that we have the new fleet study and the fleet recommendation, that in the future, if we wanted to limit the scope of the product in which we are going to be bidding, we would certainly take that to a committee first and get the blessing and then say, this is what we're going to go out to bid for, if you're okay with that. And then, once we've agreed on that scope, then it's easier to go out there and say, okay, this is what we're bidding on, because we have in the past tended to err on the side of, let's open it up to as many people as possible, and then we whittle it down at the, once we've received the bids, and it's probably more advantageous if we do more work on the front end and limit exactly what it is that we're looking for, as long as it also doesn't give the impression that we're trying to sole source this bid and make it so narrow that there is only one person out there that can bid on this product.
You really tested these after you got in all the different bids?
Before, actually.
Before?
Before we brought all these units out and demoed them for a week. Not only the streets guys went out and put the hammer on and the grinder and did different street repairs, but then fleet maintenance personnel crawled all over, put them up on the rack, opened up, looked at everything, so, yes, we did, we did the thorough review.
Okay. Any other comment or... Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Give your mic.
Vic, one question, we need a super majority to approve this in the council?
At the city council meeting, there are two different actions we should be taking. One is to reject all the bids, and then, second, waive competitive bidding to accept this one, and that does require two-thirds of the aldermen, so that would be six of you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, and to item six on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule eleven, which pertains to no right turns permitted on red signal. Chapter forty of the City Code of Lake Forest nineteen seventy-one is amended. On this one, it would be, as we get to the council, a first reading and, if desired by council, final approval in our regular meeting, but this is for officially removing the no turn on red signal on Deer Path proceeding west at its intersection with Waughkegan Road, which is intimately affecting one of our council members.
No, no, two.
Okay. But, again, Ramish.
Thank you, Chairman. Two residents, not council members. The traffic safety committee, again, looked at this intersection and, as the memo outlines, you know, we looked at all the intersections on Waughkegan. Anytime we get any of these requests on traffic safety, you know, the committee looks at, obviously, the accident histories and look at the other pedestrian, impact with the pedestrians, and then, more importantly, how does it, how does it help with the motorist? So, looking at all those three criteria, Wesley at Waughkegan doesn't have any no turn on red, and then, as you go up north, even by West Moreland, there's no turn on red. Having said that, we, again, looked at the accident reports, and at this, again, the number of injuries, you're looking at ten for the past three years, again, these are all what we call the, they can't pinpoint exactly at Deer Path, this can be the rear ending on Waughkegan Road, but overall, at that intersection, the number of injuries were very less compared to at other intersections where you've got the stoplight. And when we drove, the whole traffic safety committee did drive through that intersection, when we stopped at heading west, other aspect was the clear sightlines, whether there's clear sightlines for the traffic heading north on Waughkegan. And, you know, the driver and all the members of the traffic safety committee felt that there was clear sightlines. So, based on all, and the other thing was, there was no sidewalk on that side, on, basically on the west side. So, looking at all these criteria, the traffic safety committee recommended to Bob to remove the sign, and since it's a traffic change, it has to be blessed by the council, so that's where we are.
I applaud the traffic safety committee, great recommendation.
Thank you.
And just a question to satisfy, as you're going northbound on Waughkegan Road and attempting to go eastbound on Deer Path, is there any thought been put on possibly allowing a right-hand turn on red when there's no pedestrians in the intersection?
We can look into, but see, that one, Waughkegan Road, because of, we can control the Deer Path and all the side streets, which are like anywhere from five thousand to ten thousand, what we call is average daily traffic. Waughkegan Road is forty to fifty thousand cars per, per day. So, IDOT has to approve that. My guess is the reason why, because of the heavy volume, they just don't want to take a chance of people coming, taking left.
I think the other thing is, there's a left turn arrow if you're coming south on Waughkegan, and that left turn arrow is turning into a single road. So, if someone goes to make their turn on red and is only looking left, they will hit, and the, whereas the one we're correcting now, even though there is a left turn, I'm not even sure there's an arrow coming off Deer Path, but regardless, there are two lanes there. So, the guy making the turn should be going on the westerly lane, and the guy making the right-hand turn on red will be on the easterly lane, so...
Or he can go straight.
Or he can go straight.
Right, so I think that that's why it makes sense here, and we're going to run into issues the other way.
But they all turn on the other one anyway.
They do.
They do, but...
Unless it's a protected left, then that's a possibility, but you don't want protected left on. Alderman Hamron already has issues at Field Court and Route sixty, so...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Two, two, not just one, two.
And any other comment on this issue or...
No, I think it's great that the traffic committee was so responsive, so...
And, well, moving on to item seven on the agenda is opportunity for public comment, and there being no public comment will happily go on to item eight, or, which would be adjournment that, Bob, should we take an opportunity to see if there's any discussion we could have now for items that might be on the council agenda?
Sure. I think you've gone through most of them.
Can we start the roast of Vren?
Let me just verify if there's anything else.
There's nothing else. There's two ordinances made, but you have one ordinance.
We've got the LPA contract.
Thank you, Chairman, now with members of the committee. You did not receive Exhibit A, the attachment to the ordinance in your packet, it's being distributed right now. So, certainly, if you prefer not to take action on this item tonight, that's your option. Alternatively, you could choose to grant first reading later this evening, and then we would bring it back. This, the changes proposed to the tree preservation and landscaping ordinance, chapter forty-two, are essentially housekeeping, housekeeping items. The majority of the markups that you see are related to the recent shift of the park section from public works to the park and recreation department. Currently, the ordinance is administered under the Director of Community Development and Director of Public Works. The duties are essentially split, Director of Community Development regulates tree removal related to development and on private property. The Public Works Director, and now the Park and Recreation Director, regulates tree removal on rights of way and tree removal related to diseases and infestations. In the changes, in some areas, the Director of Public Works remains as a party with authority because in some instances, there are utility issues, engineering issues, that, at least for now, we felt that it was appropriate to allow the Public Works Director to continue to have authority to grant removal permits. The...
Kathy, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
So, it seems like there's clearly defined roles of the three directors in terms of their authority. Is there any overlap that if one felt very strongly one way and the other didn't, does Bob flip a coin or does he take charge, or how do we do something like that?
He doesn't take charge.
Okay.
The mayor takes it.
Mayor takes over?
But there are situations where there may not necessarily be overlap, but there may be tree removal without approved permits, and often in the past, I've consulted with Tom Nance, and he's done the same with me, so I feel like anytime there's been any controversy, we've always been able to sit down and talk through it, and I expect that that same thing would continue, because there, you're right, there is some overlap. Sometimes, development activities, perhaps a change of a driveway location, might necessitate tree removal in the parkway, so then we would work with the forestry department. So, we tried to make it as clear-cut as possible, but this is something that we really have to work together and work as a team.
Thank you.
So, those are most of the changes you see marked up. While we were making changes, however, we threw in two additional changes. One is the definition of heritage tree, which is, I believe, on about page three or four of your packet there. Heritage tree in our ordinance is currently defined as twenty-five inches or larger. Heritage trees located in side yards or rear yards require tree removal permits. So, if someone wanted to remove a twenty-four-inch tree in a rear yard, no permit, no city review would be required. We've heard from both community development staff and forestry staff that twenty-five inches is a really large tree, and so we're ratcheting that down a little bit to provide us a little more opportunity to talk with homeowners, to see if there's some other opportunities, particularly now that we know ash trees are threatened. And when a tree of twenty-five, of twenty-four inches or twenty-three inches is removed, we often get calls from neighbors, and if it's in the rear yard and we haven't issued a permit, we don't have the opportunity to say, yes, a permit's been issued, and here's why it's coming down. And just for comparison purposes, we did survey some other communities, and until maybe the past five or seven years, Lake Forest really was at the forefront with its tree preservation ordinance, but as you can see now, most communities require permits for trees that are, for removal of trees that are much smaller. So, although we didn't want to make a leap from twenty-five inches to ten inches in the rear yards and side yards, we wanted to just come down to twenty inches. We think that it's manageable. If in the future, we see a continued need, we would come back to you and maybe talk about eighteen inches or fifteen inches, but we believe a twenty-inch tree in a side yard or rear yard is appropriate for city review through a permit process. The final change is that, under PESS, Emerald Ash Borer was specifically called out. It wasn't previously named in the ordinance for obvious reasons. So, those are the three changes. Again, if you choose to do so this evening, later, you could grant first reading, or if you want time to look through it, we can certainly bring it back for first and second reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy, had a question. Well, what was the rationale for not lowering it below twenty inches? Because I'm really surprised, now that I see these numbers up here, how much larger our tree size is than most of the other communities listed there. I mean, we're Lake Forest, and, you know, we're allowing trees to be cut down that are three times the size of some of those communities.
Our ordinance does require permits for removal of trees ten inches and larger in the front yards and in the corner side yard. We have traditionally been more lenient in the side yard and in the rear yard, and I think partly because our ordinance was out in front. But you're correct, we are seeing some inches come significantly below where we're at. I think we wanted to take, not a baby step, but we wanted to take a modest step, certainly given that we have had some staffing reductions, we don't want to make a jump without really understanding how it's going to impact us. We don't think there'll be a significant change. I think at the staff level, our preference probably would have been to come to you with eighteen inches, but we were trying to gauge what you would support, and I think our consensus at the staff level was that we'd really like to get at least twenty inches and didn't want to push you too far. So, eighteen inches would certainly be supported by staff.
I, for one, would not feel pushed at all. In fact, I'm pushing here to try to get, suggest that it even go lower, but I think we're doing this as a first reading, so we can think about it.
Are ash trees exempt?
Yes, ash trees, diseased trees, just because someone needs to come in and get a permit doesn't mean that we don't approve it and that we don't waive fees. And yes, ash trees are now in a category that...
Because the public has some question to that, so that's good.
Correct, but importantly, sometimes people don't know what kind of tree they're looking at.
Oh, yeah, it's an ash.
So, it allows us to go out and identify if there are ash trees. We want to understand if, in fact, they are infected, so that we can get that data. But yes, those are exempted and the fee is waived.
If they're not infected, then they're just like any other tree? Maybe.
With ash trees, we're certainly looking at them differently now.
Okay.
We're probably going to come down on most ash trees on the side of, remove it.
And we're sure these are right. And we're sure these are right. I mean, those are, they just seem very small.
And some of them, the ones that have ranges, some communities distinguish size of the tree by species of the tree.
I mean, two inches in diameter.
It's a twig.
I mean, two pi R, I mean, we're talking, you know, that much radius.
At five inches off the ground is how it's measured, and River Woods at least told us that they require permits. Now whether people get permits, that certainly is debatable.
Some of those are based too on subdivisions, where they have a new subdivision and they're all small trees planted.
I'm sorry, it's diameter.
That they don't want them to be removing the young trees that are growing, so this way they can keep them in there.
It's diameter, it's not circumference.
I think that one of the other considerations is that the rigor of enforcement in some towns varies, particularly with the smaller trees. But when you have those low thresholds, they're often there for tree replacement standards.
Okay.
And just because you need to get a true removal permit doesn't mean that it's not approved. It simply gives us an opportunity to find out if there is a disease or infestation, gives us the opportunity to perhaps have a discussion and offer some other options in an effort to preserve trees when appropriate.
Let me make one other observation. The place of measurement of this diameter is not at the ground, it's four and a half feet above. So if we're talking about a tree, you know, normally we think of a tree that is so wide, we're probably, our eyes are probably drawn to the ground to see what its girth is there. But we're talking about four and a half feet off the ground. So this is, it could be a much larger tree actually than.
There is a lot, and it's diameter, I was thinking it was circumference.
Anyway, so I made my point.
Four and a half feet is an industry standard for all trees that are purchased. They're measured on that basis at the nursery level.
I'm not suggesting we should change the place of measurement. I'm saying that if you measure it up here, when you get down to the ground, it can be a lot wider than actually the 20 inches at the place of measurement. It might be a bigger tree.
I gotta say, I don't know why we don't measure by circumference, because it's, you don't know the diameter, I mean, you know, you don't know the diameter to cut the tree down.
As Alderman Lubie said, it is an industry standard, and these inches are diameter breast height is what it's technically called. So I don't think, I agree, I don't think we want to change that standard because it's used pretty universally.
We could certainly go down to 18. I don't have any problem with that. Then we'd be tied with the highest.
Okay, and any other discussion? Do we have any other topics, or should we break for five minutes until the regular meeting? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn at this point?
So moved.
Second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.